Those of you that may not be aware, that corner of the room on the back table are some papers that will help you follow through procedures of the meeting and help yourself. And first item we're going to pay attention to is number one, and it's invocation. So we're going to do a moment of silence and reflection, and then we'll proceed with the meeting. Just bear your heads just a minute, please. Thank you so much. And we'll officially call the meeting to order and welcome everybody for being here tonight. And number three is pledge allegiance to the American flag on my right. You would please stand. Move your head here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Number four, consideration of the agenda approval. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no, unanimously approved, Madam Clerk. Number five, Madam Clerk, the conflict of interest.
Part six, rule thirteen E of the twenty twenty-four Rules of Procedure requires members to disclose any potential conflicts of interest. Please state if you have any potential conflicts. Mayor Holden?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Myers?
No conflicts.
Commissioner Smith?
No ma'am.
Commissioner Thomas?
No.
Commissioner Dyer?
No.
And Commissioner Park?
No ma'am.
Thank you.
Number six, consideration of the minutes of February eighteen, special meeting and February eighteen regular meeting. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
The motion for both A and B?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any discussion? Anyone in all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no, unanimously approved. Well, number seven, public comments. If you want to say anything, after I get through with my list, if you'll raise your hand to be recognized and come forth and speak into the microphone and present yourself to the Board of Commissioners, that would be great. The people that have already signed up, Rick McIntyre.
My name is Rick McIntyre, one twenty-two, Brigade. My comments tonight are on behalf of the Holden Beach Community Alliance and deal with agenda item number fourteen, the pier building demolition. As reported last month, the Alliance has identified approximately forty items that are currently inside the pier building that we would like to retrieve in the interest of historical preservation and community interest. The items have been logged, categorized, and submitted to the town for consideration. We have now been advised through our town attorney that we will not be granted access to the building by the town prior to demolition. We've been directed to work directly with the demolition contractor for the opportunity to retrieve these items. We intend to comply with this directive, but request that as a part of awarding this demolition contract, that the town notify the contractor of our request to remove these items from the building, so the contractor will not move forward with the work without consideration of the need to remove these items for historical preservation. We thank you for your consideration of this request.
Thank you, sir. Jim Bauer?
Jim Bauer, three twenty-nine, Ocean Boulevard West. My discussion is on items fourteen and sixteen. As far as the pier buildings coming down, hooray. Everyone that's been involved with it, anyone with a degree, Inspector Evans himself has said that the buildings are beyond salv- beyond salving. There's no reason to keep them up. They are dangerous, and the demo must proceed anyway if we're going to do anything with either the old pier or perhaps any sort of future new pier. Mr. McIntyre, I agree with you a hundred percent on you should be, if there is historical value items in there, that we should be able to get them out, and I wholeheartedly agree with you with that, and I would hope that the board would take that action. I never thought we would agree on anything, so. See statistically, it's good. The monkeys, the monkeys type, you know, the monkeys in the room typing, typing, with typewriters with Shakespeare, there it happened. All right. Item sixteen, Block Q. I think that's a fantastic idea for the pickleball courts. Block Q is an excellent place for them where the shouts of joy of people yelling won't affect too many houses. It's also a year-round attraction. It's healthy. It's, you know, virtually low impact, and it might even be able through the parking, now that the parking is year-round, even though I really don't agree with that, it will, it could conceivably actually pay for itself, so that I think that's a win-win. Thank you very much. Thank you for listening to me.
Will Carter?
Will Carter, one oh eight Starfish Drive. Best part, the most three important, most important things in real estate are location, location, location. So when last year I heard they were going to tear down the fire station and build a new fire station, did some, just did some phone calling and research, and the town owns the three lots at the corner of Greensboro Street and Ocean Boulevard to the west-hand side. Those lots are not good for commercial or residential or anything else because we can't get a permit through the Department of Environmental Quality, KAMA, and the organs of New York. I got on the phone last year and talked to Mary Penny Kelly, who was the head of the EQ, I talked to her assistant, talked to Mickey, Mickey Suggs at the Corps of Engineers, I talked to Jonathan Hawk, Jonathan Howell at KAMA. Nobody's ever asked for it, so everybody says you can't do it. So when Myrtle Beach caught on fire, I called back up, talked to the new, Mr. Wilson is the new Department of Environmental Quality, which is over KAMA, and I talked to his assistant for about thirty minutes or so, and told her that, you know, we needed a place for a new fire station, and that I know they make variances, and she said, well, we could probably do that. She had Jonathan Howell call me back from KAMA, and he says, just get the town to write a letter. And I'm not asking the town to build a fire station, I'm not asking them to do anything, I just want you to write a letter. And so these three lots that are useless to the town cannot be used for commercial or residential use, but can get a variance for a fire station. If the town would write a letter and request it from Jonathan Howell at KAMA, they think they might be able to do it. That would entail, we have to put a bulkhead around the new sewer pump station anyway. So while the bulkheads getting in, we could go around all three of those lots and have a new area to build a fire station at whatever time we think we can afford it, or maybe another board comes in. But while we have this opportunity, do not waste it over getting the town manager to write a letter to Jonathan Howell requesting that for emergency services for the good of the population, the people of Holden Beach. The fire station that we have now, I've been in need of water in there, it's got a canal twenty feet off the back of it, it's two hundred feet from the top of the ocean. Greensboro lot has no canal near it, and all we need is a bulkhead, which is what most of every house to the west on Ocean Boulevard from that Greensboro Street has a bulkhead behind their house. We could bulkhead it, we could fix the dirt in it to make it proper for whatever time we get ready to build a fire station. It won't cost the town anything except the bulkhead and whatever dirt we put into it. And I would ask the town to make a motion to, let's ask Jonathan Howell, while the politics are right, to be able to put an emergency center and fire station on those three lots that the town owns that are useless right now. Thank you.
Mr. Carter. Maria Surprise.
Sorry, didn't want to stop. Hello, Maria Surprise, one five nine, Ocean Boulevard East. I'm addressing items eight and fourteen, the HDR report on the pier and the pier building demolition. As an individual, when determining whether or not to invest in a piece of property, I make my own due diligence evaluation, and the consequences of that decision, good or bad, are my own. When a town or municipality decides to purchase a piece of property, I would assume that they would also do their due diligence analysis to make an informed decision, because it affects not just themselves, but the entire community, all the residents and all the guests who come here. The pier and the pier building have been in serious safety disrepair for many, many, much, much longer than the town of Holden Beach has owned it. Unfortunately, in my opinion, a thorough engineering review of the property's assets was not completed prior to the purchase, and as we all know, there's been a tremendous back and forth about how we should move forward. Now finally, we have an engineering report that definitively states it is not worth considering repairs to the pier or the pier building, and it is time to rid our town of this public safety liability and begin fresh. As Commissioner Dyer said at last month's meeting, and I quote, "That property was purchased for an emergency access, an ADA compliant access, and an access that allows those homeowners that have been using the property that the previous owner allowed the town to use at no cost. That property was not considered just for the pier, the part of the grant went towards the land purchase." So now, let's have a discussion on what we want to do with that land, this new blank slate property, together and with all the facts, and let's continue the great work of keeping Holden Beach one of the greatest beaches in the United States of America. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone that feels like if you've signed up and I failed to call your name? All right. Madam Clerk, does that complete the list as you understand?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you all for your comments, and we're now on number eight, and...
Sir. HDR was hired to engage in an engineering analysis of the pier, the condition assessment of the pier structure, structure has been initiated by their structural lead, and Will Fuller and Bill and Cannon are here tonight to present their findings to the board. As they're making their way to the podium, I will say that regardless of your decision after you receive their report tonight, that they do have some follow-up questions regarding their scope of work that the board will need to act on, so they will either need to be at next month's meeting or a special meeting if one's called in between.
You gentlemen have the floor. Thank you for being here.
So, yeah, thank you all for the time. As mentioned, we're just here to present some preliminary findings that are resulting from our initial investigation. We just wanted to provide the town with a timely notice of these findings to allow the town to have an opportunity to curtail the scope, given our recommendation. You know, we can still go down the path, the town chooses, it's not an issue at all. This is just purely HDR's recommendation from these initial findings and as we're presenting. So from those findings, you know, the bottom line up front is that the repair does not, does not have a good chance of being cost-effective in the end. There is a lot of structural deficiencies up and down, ranging from the superstructure basically needing entirely to be replaced, to the substructure, having numerous amount of pilings that have known issues, along with the pilings all being at the end of their service life or well beyond their service life, depending if they're the original pilings. Between those facts, that's how we arrive at our assessment, and, you know, we're happy to discuss further what we found in that initial investigation, and also to clarify, we'll have a full report that'll be coming in several more weeks as well, that's going to expand upon these initial findings.
So, Ms. Mary, I would like you, the accounting situation, the pier, you know, anything's possible, but if it doesn't make sense to do it, that's why we wanted to give you an opportunity to look at this before we went down the path to looking at the repair option too much more. The, the substructure is in poor condition, the deck is in poor condition, the crossbracings are in poor condition, as you can see in the report, there's not a whole lot of good to start with as far as repair of the pier. So ultimately, while you could conceivably do it, because anything's possible, it would take a pretty, it's going to take a pretty significant effort. I think the quality of what you would end up with would be, your service life would be questionable, and it just might not make sense. So we just want to put that out there. We can answer the questions or we can give it a tour, but just want to let you know that you might, you know, you might want to consider one with the, the cost for an actual reconstruction here as opposed to the repair. The other part of it is, it was my understanding that we were going to look at a repair, the repair, the preference for repair would be a top-down methodology where you would actually have a clipper on the pier, and I'll tell you, I don't weigh anywhere near what a piece of every equipment is, but I can walk on that pier and I can feel that deck giving away. So the last thing I'm going to do is recommend to Chief, the top-down methodology.
All right. Anybody have questions?
Yeah, just to make sure I understand, I've read your report, and thank you for bringing this up upfront and early. I kind of anticipated we would end up at this point based on what I've seen at the pier. Overall, the condition of the pier at this point is poor, and we would have to resort to floating plant to do any repairs, which is going to be, based on my experience working for the Army Corps, is expensive. You mentioned a full report, Will. When are we going to, you said several weeks, do you have a target date?
Yes, yes, sir, we do. We've got April fourth is going to be the draft's middle date. Following us to the middle, the town will have a period to review it, typically a period of two to four weeks, but we understand the board has a schedule so we can accommodate. But, you know, that's when the town will be able to comment, you know, have any questions, and then we finalize following it.
We wanted to get the summary out in time of matter ahead of that, so you'd have to time to consider it.
Okay.
And just, just to expand to why, we wanted to get this out. Basically, the first step in that repair option will be to continue the investigation. Now, it would be the underwater inspection. Our structural inspection that we carried out on March third did not include any underwater considerations. So these findings that we have here wouldn't even include any potential blowwater line issues. So with that being the very first thing to come, come in the next line of events, I believe the sub was close to about a twenty-five thousand dollar fee, so you're basically dropping twenty-five thousand up front, just to even continue down that any further. We just wanted to provide this recommendation before we started spending those dollars. Once they start getting spent, that's going to be a big snowball, but...
How will this affect the timeline on completing the preliminary design and cost estimates on a pier replacement?
Should save, should shave off, I would say, a good month and a half or so, you know, before you start looking, we would focus strictly on the design aspects and estimating the cost for the new structure. So I would, I would imagine six weeks, but two months.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have a question? Mr. Smith?
What type of, what kind of investigation did y'all, you guys do? Did you go up on the pier itself, and did you not notice that when the pier rose up from where it was on land, that from there out was in better condition than the part that's overland? Did you see that also?
Yes, sir. It certainly wasn't relatively better condition, but it's still not great condition. It, the investigation was a full topside, we walked the entire, entire length. We also performed from the below as far as we could to the tideline on a type one and type two inspection following ASCE standards.
Type one, type two inspection?
So a type one is going to be a visual inspection, where you can purely, you don't touch the structure at all, and a type two is where you'll clear off any sort of issues, blocking that visual look, and also have slight destructive testing also, where you are being able to have a little bit more of an intensive look as opposed to just a visual test.
So you did the type two also?
Yes, sir.
You actually took stuff apart?
Uh, we did, the part of that that we did was a physical penetration test. Yeah, where we...
Penetration, like go with a nail in it, drill the hole in it?
Yeah, we, we took a hammer, we sell what the compression was in the wood, that kind of gives an idea of the state of the structural support the wood provides, but that was as far as it went.
Now, was that the wood that over the land part or the part over the ocean?
Both.
Both, the part of this out over the ocean?
Yeah, on the top side, over the, over the water, from the top side we did, but from the structure underneath, it would have been from the anchor building, I believe it went about just under halfway down to, to about station three hundred. So, you know, seven hundred fifty foot pier, so it went about halfway down.
Right, so with you, pressure, like you hit it with a hammer, and if it doesn't leave a dent, or it shows, did it show any rot?
Absolutely.
On what part? The part before it goes up or the part out over there?
Uh, there was rot all the way through. There, there's going to be, you know, again, we weren't able to get on the pilings that were into the water, but there's going to be rot all through the top side from, you know, the start to the end, and then from the underneath, we were able to check the pilings, some of the support bracings. There was basically rot from the start to the middle and, you know, to the end, although we weren't able to, again, to test the pilings themselves out into the water.
I was on the pier probably six, maybe eight months ago, and I just, I, you know, I walked it myself, and I noticed the wood on the, especially the part before it ramps up, is older, and we bought it, Mr. Bass told us that was the oldest part of the structure. But the, the decking on the rest of it, when it's two inches thick, I mean, hitting it with a hammer isn't going to tell you if it's rotten, and what I, I don't see how it can rot to the degree you're talking about in, in nine months. I do, I, you know, I just, I've got, from just my personal observation of it, I just can't see that it's in all that terrible of a condition. The next question is, did you use any information that was already gathered from the, the previous engineering group?
Uh, yes, sir. That, that's going to be what's providing the geotechnical information, so that, that saved new bearings need to be collected. Yes, sir.
Right, so in other words, what, what I don't understand is how, one, I do it because I've worked with engineers on the bike, how one group of engineers says, yes, no, we just need to replace certain ones, the decking that's overland was going to have to be basically replaced anyway because we had to make it ADA compliant. And as far as working from the top, I mean, I'm an old guy, I watched them build it, and there was truck, a truck on the pier with a boom, you know, it, you know, it was supportive vehicle, and with the proper bracing and so forth, that the, the first engineering group had designated it, we, we would take care of that. I just can't, I just don't understand how there can be such a variance between a one engineering group and your engineering group, and if you, Mary, can I, can I get up for the extra turn?
I mean, I was working with, getting this group and this stuff, we were really trying to get this moving forward before it was all set to an end, and we looked, and then we designated there was...
Mr. Smith, I've got, need a microphone.
That's true.
Well, we found there was thirteen pilings that would necessarily, did definitely need to be repaired, and as I said, the end closer to the, to the building, of course, it was going to have to be pretty much replaced, we thought, to make it ADA compliant. Now, that was something that we understood with. What we, what, I don't really see what the difference is now, in, in what we had before, we had a pretty high quote, and that was the cause, we were going to try and do some work through the building itself, to make it some ADA compliant bathroom, an ADA ramp, and afford to replace this, of, of existing first part of the wooden structure. Again, you know, I, I don't see how you can say that it's, it's, you know, not able to be replaced. I mean, like I say, it's, it's going to cost money, you know, what, with the thirty million dollars for a new pier, I can replace it, you know, for a whole lot, I mean, do a repair for a whole lot of them. I just don't see how there can be that much disparity in what we got a year ago and what we've got.
Here we go.
Bill, get Mike.
Can you explain that to us, please?
So, I'm not the person who actually wrote the report, however, it's my understanding that the...
However, it's my understanding that the, the previous engineering firm, you know, I don't, we don't know, when we asked the question about how deep the piles were, we did not get a answer that was based on needing to load the pier deck, but it was based on how deep the water was and the equipment they could put out there. When you're building a bridge or a pier or anything where you're driving piles, the embedment of the pile is dependent, the depth of the embedment of the pile is dependent on the loading that has to be on the, on the deck and all the forces that are have to be out there. In this case, the water and people on the deck. And if you're going to put a truck or whatever out there on the deck, all that has to be taken into consideration. The people, the other, the previous engineers might have done a fine job. We don't have a complete report from them that would tell how they got, came to their conclusion. We're telling you what we came up with.
From a visual.
The gentleman, the gentleman who did this is a licensed professional engineer. He is a marine structures engineer. I personally have supervised management trucking for over 100 bridges for N C D O P. And so I'm, I'm pretty familiar with the pile aspects and the structural aspects of a pier or a bridge or whatever like that. But I'm just telling you, this is what we found. Our engineer is going to be willing to put his seal on it as a professional engineer. I'm not going to put my seal on anything that I don't feel right. And it's, we're doing that to ensure that you, the town, the citizens of the town are out there safely and we're providing the best possible service.
Yes, sir. I think, I believe that what we got from the original group also had the same credentials. And of course, they had to have the same, their same responsibility for the, for the end use of it.
I, I fully agree. I would say that, you know, I, I did say that you could actually, you know, there's a way to repair the pier. I didn't say you could not repair the pier. It is doable. It might not be practical. So that's why we're not saying don't do it. We're just bringing this to your attention so you can make a decision whether we want to continue. You know, originally we're scoped to look at the repairs, figure out what needs to be repaired, provide a cost estimate. On one hand, on the other hand, look at a redesign or a rebuild and do a cost estimate for that. So that at the end of this project, you all could make a decision on where to go. We're just bringing this to your attention now. So if you want to curtail the repair option, that's fine. If you don't, that's fine too. You know, we're trying to provide service. We're doing this basically as a courtesy of the town. So if the town choose to do this, you may, you know, you're going to save some significant, significant money. But if you want to continue looking at the repair options, we're happy to provide to that.
Can I say something?
Yes, sir. I think I'm.
Ms. Tom?
So I have the initial report here from A T M from October 21. I don't actually think the two reports are that far off. I'm just going to read a few of their findings. First of all, the overall says Holden Beach Fishing Pier has likely surpassed its remaining service life, considering it was constructed in 1957, which is 64 years old, and the pier was constructed for a 50-year lifespan. One of the key concerns observed during the inspection was the heavily corroded and missing damaged connections hardware throughout the pier structure. Most connections appear to have more than 50% sectional loss, thereby reducing the strength by 50%. In order to extend the life, many of the connections and bracings will need total replacement. I mean, it goes on. There's difficulty estimate the pilings because of storm condition. Missing detached or broken cross braces are critical elements are required. Nearly all visible connections are in critical condition and will require replacement. I don't think that the reports are that far off. I mean, if you read through them. The other thing that they did was they made an estimate of 500 to 750,000 to re, to fix what they were seeing and the cost estimates came in at 2 million and 4 million. So you got to, some of this I'm taking with a grain of salt, but their findings were pretty much on par with yours, that it was way past its lifetime and almost all the bracings will need to be replaced and is it cost effective at this point?
I, I think that's our point. Our, as far as the cost, uh, cost versus the estimates, the, uh, the building prices for construction have escalated dramatically over the last probably three to four years. I think you can look at that, that was just about any, any project, whether you're talking about building a home or building a, a major structure. So I mean, I would, I, I don't know that it would go up that high, but I can see it. I can certainly see it doubling.
Well, we got quotes for 2 to 4 million over a year ago and, and so you can assume those are probably double now.
I, I, I don't know that they would be double, but you know, it, it's going to be escalating over time, so.
So I appreciate you bringing this to our attention so we don't waste money going down a path that doesn't make any financial sense. And I appreciate you bringing this to our attention in a timely manner so we can make an informed scientific, based on science decision. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Harv?
I think it's important to note that the two firms were asked different questions. The previous architect slash engineering firm was asked to tell us what we need to do to get the pier open. They were not asked to provide a complete repair for the pier to extend the life of the pier indefinitely. You guys were asked more for 30 years, not indefinitely. So they're actually different questions and that's why there was less work. It, again, the pier is, is beyond its life cycle. So I think at this point, I'd like to make a motion to accept H D R's recommendation to pursue the pier replacement option only.
I'll second that.
Discussion, anyone?
I'd like to thank, thank you. I'd like to thank you for your work. I thank you for considering our perspective and coming here with an opportunity to save us money. That's always welcome. Like Mr. Parfus and Ms. Thomas, I read the old reports. One was from 2021 that said the pier had surpassed its life. The other one was from 2022. They did do an underwater report. I think you've probably seen them. The facts are the facts. I mean, and if you extrapolate, I think the $2 million to $4 million estimate was to replace 20 piles, less than 20 piles, you know, you extrapolate that out, it's a deep money pit. And I don't want to go down it and I'm glad you brought it to our attention. I'm glad you brought it to our attention now so that we can actually save money versus going down the path and telling us what you, you know, what you already think the answer is going to be. So thank you very much. I agree. I think we need to just face reality and move forward with a new pier.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, I've got one other thing, Mr. Mayor. As far as the original plan, that, what Chip brought us back, that 2.2 including, included work to the pier house itself. And that's something that we didn't really want in the scope of the original, original work. And I do believe that if we would have really started at that point, we could have, or asked for a little different to, to reduce the scope, we could have probably kept it somewhere around a million and a half. And it, if the increased rate, so like you said, over the past couple of years, you know, we'd be way ahead of the ballgame if we just kept on the path that we were going. We'd have it probably opened up unusable right now, but it looks like we've, uh, we do, spending money hand over fist to come to this conclusion. It costs us an extra $150,000 in the purchase because of delays. The first engineering group, we spent about $150,000 for that, so that's 300. And then your charges today just add to that. So we would have been more than halfway along on making those repairs if we'd have just carried on with what we had originally started instead of having the project stopped completely.
Any more? Any more commissioner comments? You ready to vote?
Yep.
Yep.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Three to two, Madam Clerk.
What? Nothing changed.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Number nine, Chief.
Good evening.
Evening.
Glad to see all of you, but Rick, I'm glad to see you back in the seat up there.
Yes, sir. It's meant to be good.
Oh, there's not a lot to talk about in the, in the actual police report this month. So don't have a lot of information to share. It's, as, as you know, we are getting into the springtime, starting to see more people, more traffic. So we're gearing up and ramping up for the summer. We've actually got a meeting this week with the Merchants Association about the festival, which is next month. So we're just, we're ramping up and getting ready for summertime. That's, that's what we've got going on at the Police Department. And to add to that, one day I'm going to come to you with good news, but I'm coming to you tonight with a little bit of bad news. Uh, we've talked about the staffing shortages and last month I presented some ideas that we are working on. They are in the works. They're, they're not ready to bring back to the board and present yet. We are working on it. But anyway, where I'm at today, and I shared this with Christie this morning, is we found out this morning that we have another officer who's out on medical leave right now. So on top of the four vacancies I have, we have three officers on medical leave. So out of 11 positions, we are down seven officers right now. So we have four working officers, myself, Lieutenant Dilworth, Sergeant Milligan standing in the back. He's actually my night shift tonight. I was day shift today, and then Officer Dozier. So you'll see the four of us rotating through shifts. We're still providing 24-hour coverage, seven days a week, 365 days a year. Nights, holidays and weekends. And, um, but as we are stretched thin right now, we're doing everything we can. So that's, that's my bad news, but that's what I've got for you. Yes.
Is there any way you can get some temporary relief or help from other law enforcement agencies around here to, you know, because you guys love to just start dropping like flies working like this. That's a lot to cover for, for people.
Yes, and, and I've reached out to some chiefs and we're looking at some mutual aid things. So, so there are some things in the work, it's works in the background. So we're, we're looking at whatever options we can. The, the chiefs in the area and the sheriff's office too are really great about helping us and providing assistance. So we're, we're doing everything we can. They're really coming together as a, as a family to try to help us.
Okay.
Yes.
Any more questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Is there any outlook on when the disabled people will be coming back? Is it short-term? Like I know one fell on the ice and so I'm wondering if.
Correct. Um, I don't know how to answer that and without getting into their medical, I, I don't know that I should. So I'm just, I'm not being rude. I'm just not going to answer your question.
Okay.
Looking at the report, something jumps off the page at me.
Please.
Second degree sexual offense, second degree rape.
I, I actually had a note to mention that and I got ahead of myself. So what, what this case was, this was, this was not like a home invasion type deal. Without going into all the details of, of their situation, this was a domestic between a husband and a wife. They were here on vacation. It was a delayed reporting after they returned home. So that's, that's kind of where we're at with that. And without getting into, I, I, I'm kind of going to leave it at that. I just, that's, that's.
That's satisfactory. Thank you for discussing.
Yes, it's, yes, it's, I don't, I don't, this is not a threat to the community, basically. This was an internal situation at, at their house.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I just want to thank you for, you and Adam for your diligence and trying to keep an eye on us here at Holden Beach. I know you're under unusual circumstances, but you rest assured that myself and the rest of the community are behind you. And if there's anything that you think that we can do to help us, but.
We will. We appreciate everything. Honestly, community's been great. We, we appreciate everyone's support and I mean that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Mr. Evans, Inspection Department.
Good afternoon. I just go through the permits. I won't, I won't dilly-dally around with the money. But with active new home permits, we have 21. Other active permits is 454. That's how many sitting in the door over there that we monitor, we keep up, that call in. Permits issued this month over 30,000 was 79. Permits issued over 100,000 was five. Substantial improvements is zero and that number is going down because we've worked over the years to get the houses that were low or pretty firm to get them up out of the flood zone. Permits issued waiting for pickup is 27. Total permits is 502. We've got permits in review and typically what that means is, is that we, we, we've looked at them. We've got them, they're sitting on the shelf over there. They've probably most likely been put in the system. We now have a pretty much computerized base system. So they could go out today or in the middle of the night whenever people want paper and pick them up. Cameras issued is a five. That means that somewhere in Ocean Hadid area or somewhere along where there's water or wave action, there's permits being issued. And zoning issued is equals eight. And that's, if there's any more than a regular home permit, then typically what that means is we're filling lots or we're prepping for new homes. Uh, permit service for inspections, there was 94 and total inspections made was 175. I think we don't put things on reports and, and because the numbers would be really high. But if you count, calculated 175 inspections by the total number of reports that we have to do, the total number of times we have to go to a house, that we actually walk and, and do those investigations and then clarify what's wrong or not wrong and then make those reports and then come back and then we contact the contractors. And then there's sometime, there's some going back and forth. If we were to document all those actions, it, it would be astronomical number. You wouldn't, you could not imagine the amount of work that, that goes through. Now, we got that report. There's a lot of interest in the ADA stuff because we've gotten to the end. This book has the ADA projects that we feel like are anywhere from 95, 99% to 100% complete. We got, we've got Avenue E. If you haven't had a chance to go down there, you should. 915 O B E, O B W, that particular job, we, we, not only did we solve ADA compliance issue there, but we got a six-foot wide walkway there. I actually measured them and forgot to bring the numbers, but I, well, it's 172 feet long. 329.5, I'm really, I'm really shocked that Mr. Bowers didn't say something. We prepared his doom. And got people walking on, actually on the town property instead of our small kids. So, uh. Okay. Well, I can't, I can't control behavior. But anyway, so 114 O B E, we added bathrooms. We, we, we've actually increased the number of handicap spots that were there. 441 O B E, we actually went above and beyond the mediation agreement for 441. 801 O B W, 801 A B O B W ended up with a post somehow at the end of it. And so I don't know if that got cleared out today, but I promised Mr. Myers that I would make sure. We. What I have here is, I'm going, I'll try to start, we'll start with Avenue E. Now, this was magic. I did this by myself. But this was magic and what you're going to see here is you're going to see my truck. My town truck is an extended cab truck and on the back of it, you're going to see a 21-foot boat and with the back of it, it's actually 22, but we'll call it 21-foot boat. Pretty sure it's going to be no problem. I had a, I have a, I don't know what you call that, a forty John on the left-hand side before we protected the amenities. I'll try to speed it up for you. We need to build a fence for this young, this young man that are right here. Look at these, this folks right here. That, I guess that fence was not wide enough. Every, a lot of people are going through there and it is my recommendation that the town actually put a fence right there to put people on the walkway. They really are walking through his, his property. Okay, if you wait a little bit, it takes a while because when she got to the end of the ramp out there, she decided to unpack. she decided to unpack everything before she got to the beach. So I've turned around to come by, so I'm waiting and that's why it's taking so long. Because I've got to wait for her to get ready for the beach. But at some point, oh, there we go. At some point I come back and as you can see, it turns just as easy coming out. All right, at the bottom of this, at the very bottom down there, right beyond that fence there at the bottom, where we took the handicap spots out, we put no parking. I came over here Saturday, Saturday with a forward camera on my vehicle and watched cars do something that I've never seen them be able to do down there, which is turn around. The, the hand, the parking, the regular parking that we have further down the road has actually been in the road. Those two fences that you see on both sides, it's actually the roadway. Where they've been parking, this young, young man to the right here, hardly could ever get out of his own driveway because of the way the parking was down there, there was no way to exit. But now we have developed a, a, a good bit of area there that has no parking because we moved it up to here that now allows them to turn around. And like I said, I had a forward camera, I couldn't figure out how to download it. It showed people pulling down there and while I was down there, someone actually pulled down there. We have a sign coming for this particular property that says handicap only, dead end road, turn around here. But we got the sign ordered with the arrow, just like we do on the west end. It's going to be important for someone to keep people from parking over on the left. And this morning there was someone who was parked for quite a bit of time on the right-hand side, right in front of a house there. That is the roadway. So we, we kind of designated where the actual road is supposed to be now. Instead of having people park in it, we now know what the road alleyway is. We hope that helps everyone. Okay? We leave there, better try to remember where they're at. I believe, do we know what that is? I believe that's 329.5. Is that, yeah, that's 329.5. And 329.5 was actually quite a, it's quite a long walkway. If I remember correctly, it's in the 200. And we added the blue, um, madding to the end of it. I don't know where I'm flying today. But this was, this is one that turned out really well. This is above and beyond what was in the mediation agreement. This was actually a walkway that we had to replace and when we did, we turned it into an ADA. We made it dual purpose with ADA access, so required. And then let's go to this one. That's 801. 801 turned out beautifully. We had, we had almost encroached into this nice young lady's side yard here before we started this project. I may have the wrong. I got the wrong one. Sorry about that. This is 915. 915 is another one we went above and beyond. This one is actually 225 feet. Maybe a little longer. And I'm not sure if we have the blue mats here yet or not, but that is a smooth transition all the way out. So the town has spent a lot of time, what I don't have on here is 114 OBE. 114 OBE added per, uh, excuse me, pervious surface. Between it and Avenue E, we added almost 5100, I'm kidding, sorry, 5500 square feet of pervious surface for handicap parking. Every handicap parking space now is on a hard surface. All of them on hard surface. Now, did I click all the way off of it?
Yeah, and you've got my mouse, sorry.
Okay. I got one last thing to tell you.
Sorry. Thank you.
Tim, this is the parking lot and like, no. Here with the parking lot and sale fish is it?
Parking lot and sale fish is actually on the ADA assessment list. There's work that'll be done there. I think me and Daniel talked about money today for the assessment and depending on how much we spend, some money I guess could be used if y'all wanted to. This is important. I don't know if anybody can read this, but I'll read you the most important part of it. A tax on the preliminary results letter and draft verification report related to the community rating system and CRS five-year cycle verification. And the next line, I can't hardly read through the whole, says preliminary finding that the town of Holden needs to improve from a CRS class seven with a pit anger check adjustment to a CRS class six to the primary security customer on the flood insurance rate. Okay? Staff worked very hard on this. This was in the, we've actually got into, all the way into the weed. This is supposed to be a five-year cycle. We were awarded in 2022. Since 2022's award, we've had three annual recertifications and two five-year certifications. We are assured by this letter that you can now fire me, so it stood to 2029. That's right. If, if you looked at the number points, you'll notice that of the 2,000.750 of them are related to the department's education, experience, knowledge and how we enforce the rules. That is, that's big. That's big news there. And with that said, that's the final part of the report. We're hoping that we will be finalizing the mediation agreement soon. Ms. Myers sent out something that had a few little minor items on them. We've already started working on them today. I've got the caller. But I, I think I told her that we weren't going to be doing a ADA, anything that had to do with the ADA, but we hopefully will bring stuff back to the final, to the mediation agreement. And I hope Ms. Myers will come back for the next meeting. Because I don't, I, I won't want to do it because we have to find one. I wanted to, the, I wanted the town to know what we're doing. So.
Yes, sir. Mr. Smith. Tim, I, I, due to the fact that I was part of that mediation with Ms. Myers, she sent me the same, I guess, email that you got with the, the issues that we had at 114 and 801 and on the east end. So tho- those seem to be pretty trivial to me as far as, not trivial, but I mean, stuff that's easily rectified. And there's a couple of other things that she won't, but won't, wanted to bring to your attention. But in the end, it, it was that she wanted to, uh, you know, if, once the item was on the list above, things were done and completed and some, some questions that she had answered to reach out, out to Key Bridge, the case manager for us and notify him of the completion of the agreement. So it looks, it looks favorable to you.
I apologize because I responded to that email and I guess I forgot to include you, Rick. I apologize, but I responded, I responded to it because, uh, and, and me and her are in agreement. We've got to talk about this. I don't know if somebody fixed it before I got to work this morning, but we've got to talk about some of the stuff. Just one item on there, the rest of it, I agree with it 100%. And when it comes to ADA stuff, you know, we would like to say at small islands, we can take care of. But 801 right now, until we can get those mats out there, you know what I mean? Needs to be done. We, we, we really haven't made it fully ADA compliance until we do that. You know what I mean? So, uh, it can be done in a couple of hours, you know what I'm saying? But it, and by no means, uh, I think that everything on that list, uh, but anything, everything that she had on her list is legit, is legitimate, but it's not, uh, anything major. But it is, it's legit.
Okay. I didn't know, I didn't see that, who she had talking.
Now, some of it, but there's, there's quite a bit of it's not in the mediation agreement, but you got to understand that her and us really all want the same things, which is ADA compliance. So there's some of it that's not part of it and we've gone way and above and beyond what the agreement required.
Sure have, and I just don't want to go down.
But we need to, when it comes to ADA compliance, you need to strive for perfection.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Tim. Good job.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I just want to take a minute and I have told several of you this on the telephone when you've inquired about ADA and I think I also alluded to this, um, when I was being interviewed for interim town manager. But I put this staff up against any staff in the state, anytime, any day. And the planning department had this in, in their wheelhouse to do. They did a phenomenal job. Tim had many sleepless nights and as he called them, overtime midnight moments of clarity where he came in. And there was design, redesign, reissuing of camera permits because dunes grew up in the meantime. And this was no small feat. They did an excellent job to get this accomplished in the amount of time they did. Additionally, what he didn't mention with this CRS review is that CRS company had our surveys and everything they needed for months. But then with a 10-day period that they gave us for turnaround, they wanted 46 new surveys and they only gave the department 10 days and they came through with flying colors to get this rating for the town. So the planning department's been working hard and they deserve to have all the respect for what they've done.
Thank you.
Good job.
Mr. Parks?
Yeah. I can't say everything Christie did, but outstanding work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's give them all a hand. Mr. McGrany? Money, ma'am.
Finance report for the month. Looking at the general fund, the February revenues look like they're down, but this is due to more tax being collected in November through December this year as opposed to the previous year. Also, some postings for February haven't been done yet, so those will be updated on the next month's report. Looking at the water sewer fund, revenues are up, but this is due to bill timing rather than an increased consumption. If you look back in January, um, we were slightly down from the prior year. So it's kind of just equaling out based on what time bills go out. And then flipping over to B part. B part's trending very close to the prior year as we approach the tourist season. And you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. If not, I will turn it over to any of the tax collectors.
Any questions? All right.
Thanks, Daniel.
Um, I'm asking, I'm the new tax collector here. My name is Penny King. And according to the general statute 105 dash 369, the governed body must order the tax collector to advertise the tax lanes on real property. So staff is recommended to approve the advertising.
I'll make the motion we approve.
I'll second.
Discussion, anyone? Hearing now and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Prose, say no. Do you know?
Thanks.
Can I ask a quick question?
Job you're doing, Miss Penny.
Yes, ma'am.
It, it says, um, that you're going to do it prior to the end of the fiscal year. What's your outlook for when you're going to do that?
We typically do that in the May, June timeframe. That way it's less advertised.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Meyer, yeah. Do we also post, I think, on the front office, on the bulletin board?
We do.
Okay. And that doesn't have to wait till June?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
All right, any more questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Chief? Todd?
Chief Ward, when I press that, does he put all of them together?
Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, just, uh, thank y'all for allowing us to be here and try to catch up and then kind of tell you where, where we're trying to move forward in the future. You know, with respect to the fire department and, uh, safety as a whole in our community. I provided you guys just some, some snippet of information that goes along with the fire department. Get you some, just history, current staff and, uh, that type of stuff. Just so you kind of have an idea, the fire department's kind of a, it's, it's a weird organization from a standpoint we don't really fit in for traditional business or kind of police department. We work different schedules. Our folks work 24-hour schedule and some 48-hour schedule. So they were 24 hours on, 72 hours off. They come back for 48 hours and then they have another 72 hours. So three shifts work that, that entire timeframe. So a full-time staff of 19 gives us enough to have six people on duty during a 24-hour period. So obviously that doesn't account for all the calls who may go on, but they can take care of the largest majority of calls. And you'll kind of see that as we go along. We do employ some part-time folks that help out with staff in their summertime. Volunteerism is down, so you can kind of see those numbers on there. That's, that's not a local issue, it's more of a nationwide issue. That's been a kind of a trending thing for several years now. Uh, and then we do have a junior firefighter program where we bring in folks who are under the age of 18 and then they can get, they're allowed to get training and by the time they get 18, they can get certified and get a job at the fire. It's an excellent opportunity for them. Below, I just listed out our total training hour for the last three years. We emphasize training a lot. You can see that number down at 22 is lower, but we're really kind of coming out of COVID then. COVID disrupted public service and all, you know, for those couple of years. And so we're, we're, we're getting back up where we want to be and we still steadily improving on training. Below that, you find just response times for different zones. We track those to different areas, situations, response to, to, to areas. Uh, and you can see those, Holden Beach, and that's your average response time over 12 months. The previous 12 months, that's the first arriving unit on scene ever. You can see that, um, Holden Beach is, is a, does take longer to get there. Some of that is geography and some of it is staff, which we'll kind of go along with the presentation. Uh, and then just below that, I just kind of gave you a snippet. April, there's no staffing on the island, it's all volunteer. And in August, we have staffing. So you can kind of see the correlation of those numbers for the most part. Sometimes they're closer together and that just really has to do with geography or where the calls happen. So if they're on the east end of the island, our station on the mainland is pretty close to the east end, so there's not a big disruption in response time. To follow where we have to go, you see the numbers go up and up and up. The next sheet just has some call data that you can reference and I highlighted this stuff for Holden Beach. You can see the percentage of calls that we respond to and those particular ones with the total calls being at the top. Calls for service. The major difference you'll notice there is 2022 was a really high number and 2024 and 2023 were much lower. That is not a product of just the community being much safer than it was, although I'd like to think so. Through a recommendation through emergency services, we stopped responding to some of the lower level medical calls. We only respond to critical calls because if, once we arrive on scene, we cannot leave a patient. If there's no ambulance there and there's a fire, we have to stay there. So sometimes those calls are, uh, they're not emergency type, but we were responding anyway. And so on their recommendation, almost all fire departments in the county went back to that, that procedure because we were coming over. We couldn't answer all the calls that were going on Sunday. Down below, you're going to see kind of major stuff and this kind of ties in with the presentation tonight. So the person, the major incident building fires, this is the number of building fires in each, each response area in any given year for 24, 23 and 22. And in the bottom section being searches and what are rescued, those are the most critical type calls generally that we respond to. And they take the most, these calls take the most people to be able to handle. We have a fire, even a lot of folks in short order, uh, to keep it from spreading. So you can kind of see those. So if y'all have any questions about that, I'd be more than happy to answer. If you'd like more data or want to see a different breakdown, we could definitely provide that. When you're looking at our call data, uh, many times we're dispatch, we're sent to a call that's reported something and we get there, quickly something different. Police department has the same thing and we code what we actually find. So a lot of times we'd like to be getting, responding to what a rescue call, then we get there, uh, someone's reported to be too far out. We have that quite often. It could be an Olympic swimmer, long distance swimmer swimming the beach and we show up and everything fine and we go on and we report that as not being an accident. So what you see on here are calls where we're actually rescuing people or putting out fire. That's the most. What we'd really like to do going forward is we'd like to really just enhance our relationship. Over the years, we've had a great relationship with the town. And we'd like to really just kind of bring that forward. The fire station, I know it's been a point of kind of contention. I don't, I don't know if it's a bad thing, it's been discussed along the way. And we would just like to continue to be part of that discussion. We've talked with some town staff, I know Mr. Evans, we've had some conversations with him. The fire service, again, building a fire station is a unique thing. It has a lot of different occupancies inside it that you wouldn't find in a normal business. So, um, and a lot of unique things that you need to kind of have in place since you live. Someone basically spends, about the time they spend at their home in a fire station, when it's there. So we'd like to just kind of continue that conversation. Obviously, you know, we're building a fire station on the mainland side that's underway now. It's hoping to be completed this time next year, hopefully. If it stays on schedule, and that took us almost five years to get started. So it takes quite a long time to get through that process from wanting to do it to designing and getting it to where you can actually do it. And along that way, we'd like to thank you obviously for letting us use the town EOT for some space in there. That's worked out very well. It allows us to to continue to serve that area uninterrupted. And actually a little bit closer to the island for a little while. We'll be half a mile closer again. We'd also like to continue the town to look for ways to keep keep barriers around emergency access and then appear open for emergency vehicles to drive. I know, I think I understand that correctly, that that might require some ordinance changes or whatever to kind of define some of those spaces. We're working hard. Not to have a situation like Ori County has had a couple of where someone got ran over on the beach from an emergency vehicle. So we try to limit our time on the beach strand. And usually when we're going in for a call, so having that space open where we can get down and launch a jet ski or take care of a patient is critical. You know, if someone's having a medical emergency on the beach and we're having to move people from around here, that if we can drive from one side to the other, if we don't have access on both sides. That that takes up critical time that we need to be taken care of. We'd also like the town to consider either through purchase or some sort of private agreement for emergency access is farther west in the eight oh one access. It takes, anytime we have anything that's on the beach strand, west of there, we have to drive on at the eight hundred block and drive. So miles down the beach in some cases, when someone's either drowning or having a medical emergency on the beach, we have to drive down the beach strand. So any way that we can enhance that, either like I said, through someone having space they're not using, if we could put an access in for emergency vehicles would be amazing. And try to shorten that distance up that we have to travel. One of the things that I've talked to Chief Dixon about this and we've had some conversations with the town is we would like to deliver a weekly public education to our community of business. I have someone who's at the fire department who's very passionate and puts some stuff together as far as that goes. And we would like to cover everything from fire safety, all the way through beach safety, water safety, everything. Try to catch those folks, especially our visitors, whenever they're coming into town at the beginning of the week and deliver them, make it fun and interactive. I know the police department wants to have a great relationship with the community. They have things that would be beneficial to them such as your bike parks or bike safety with bike lanes, that type of thing where they can, you know, tell folks where they're finding information or whatnot to. So we would like to do that and just be much more proactive because any call that we can prevent is a win. We might not be able to quantify that on a report somewhere, but if the incident never happens, that's a win for all of them. And then we'd like to request, which is kind of mostly what you've got here, is kind of explain. Our last request is kind of moving forward is to partner with the town to provide water safety stations along the beach. Just to aid in rescues and providing rip current information to folks. The rip current information would be available by a QR code, so it would be mapped to the National Weather Service. They would scan it with their phone and get their current rip current information. So we are not the purveyor of the information. So we don't make mistakes and have the wrong status or those type of things. They would be able to scan it. We would just link them to the right area to find the information. Many communities across Brunswick County, almost all the beaches have some sort of beach safety program. Oak Island has safety stations that we were kind of looking something similar to them. Capital Beach has them. Ocean Isle Beach is doing signage with, they're doing flags on their beach patrol and they're putting a flag out during the day. Sunset Beach doesn't have signs, but they have safety devices and they do beach patrol and flag for the beach patrol. So there's a myriad of, you know, information or different tactics that that the communities are using to do that. But most importantly, just trying to get the right information to the right people at the right time, so that they can make an informed decision on whether they should be in the ocean any particular day or not. Ultimately, we can't come out of the ocean. But if we give them the information, they go, oh, maybe I shouldn't go out today. We'll stay on the beach and enjoy the beach today, go tomorrow, that type of thing. And I put kind of supporting some some information that you can review. That's kind of how these would look. The first one is this page, which the National Weather Service does not issue in forecast currently. So and this is the one, if you click with the click Ocean Isle Beaches QR code, you would be taken to this page. There would be some umbrellas on you. You click your beach umbrella, it gives you the forecast. As I said, you can see the kind of sample of their code. This one is currently the town of Oak Island. What you get, they are actually updating their QR code information on the National Weather Service information. You don't have to route through the service. Their website is is getting that information from the weather service and putting it on the town website. And if they're updating it so that they can get it to, there's a little bit less error in this type because you don't have to click on the appropriate umbrella to get to the right beach that you're at. And they were kind of one of the first ones that put this together, at least in our local area. And then I just have a couple of the signs, the sample signage. This is an Oak Island one. So they were one of the, and they actually partnered with a group called the Jack Helvick Foundation. And they do water safety. They're, a child in their family drowned inland and they started a foundation to help do safety, so safety initiatives, beach water safety and things like that. To partner to do that. So. What I did, just you can kind of see, is y'all have the aerial photograph. This is through Google Earth. So the island, the red dots you're going to see on there are the public accesses. The blues are seven public or seven accesses that are in Holden Beach West. And then the yellow dots are kind of our first look at proposal and kind of where we put them. So what you see on here is a station every nine hundred feet. We feel as we've done some more discussion and kind of looked at it, is we think they should be closer than that if we were to do the program and get them down to the six hundred foot mark. So you would be not bothered in three hundred feet away from from a safety station. You'd be able to get the information and get a device, you know, if you, if someone was to need that. So. Through our board, who's been very supportive of public safety or just, you know, public education around, we've been able to, through donations, we have about $12,000 that we would be able to spend for the project. And the best we could figure, it's pretty much going to cover the installation of all. We could put up all, every station, all the signage and everything with with that amount of money. So it would be seventy-two stations at six hundred feet. We would need to, the fire department would be responsible for going out once, once everything is out. So like right now on Oak Island, there's no device, rescue device on the station. It's just the time. So you can, you're not going to get anything because when that's the weather service is obviously not issued forecast. But we would make sure that they were taken up during a storm, put back out. We would check them daily while they were out and make sure that they're all in place every morning. We just kind of need a partnership, number one, to be able to do it. We have to have someone to host the QR code, so the information. So either we have a website, town has a website. Our field is, of course, people find the town's information faster than they find private, private. We don't share the same name. So in many cases, if you were the first holding, you know, Holden Beach and Rip Current, you probably wanted to be hosted on the town page. That way you can keep it updated and that type of stuff. We don't, we have no problem hosting it if that would be the case, but that was kind of our, our deal with that. And then, of course, we would take those up. We have a commitment right now of $2,000 a year. To maintain those, to buy extra devices, extra signs each year without the barriers going to get broken or torn down. The Velcro straps go distant, whatever happens to be, and we need to, you know, up to date. So the sample's on there. We would need to tell, you know, work out details and things like that. Who's going to, where the telephone number is going to go? Who's going to get it if someone discovers something wrong with one of them? So that we could get the appropriate folks to go out, take care of it in short order. We would even take care, we'll take care of getting it all put up if you want to be a partner with us to do that. Really, the only kind of unknown financially that we found so far would be if a storm was to hit us and take out a massive number of the signs themselves and the posts. Being able to replenish that from a storm. So obviously, we would have the devices taken down. Devices are, you know, a significant portion of the cost, but the post and the signage could get swept away. So of course, probably in a few years, we'd have, you know, a stash of signs and things like that. It would be a little bit easier to do, but that would be, that's the negative that we found right now. Obviously, we don't have the money to. Three months from now, they would all get wiped out. Put them back up, if that makes sense. So but like I said, we feel it's important. I know from our experience of dealing with folks in the water, if they have something to float with. The outcome is tremendously different. It's always, it's almost always a positive outcome if they just have something to float with. We had several last year where people took boogie boards into water and they couldn't come back to shore, but they could float on boogie boards and our jet ski was able to pick them up and bring them right back. So those devices aren't there, obviously, so people would just take them swimming. If someone does decide, and we're not advocating for anyone to enter the water to try to save someone else. But those folks are available, they do that. And if we can just give them a device that they can take with them, that would keep them afloat. And the people, if they do make it to the people, they have someone afloat. But in many cases, the rescuer actually becomes the big one. We see that documented quite often where someone enters the water to save someone else, and then they in turn become a big one. So having them something that they can take with them that keeps them above water will, you know, give us a much better outcome. We were over Oak Island, talking with Chief Price there. They know that their devices over the last two years have been used twelve to fifteen times, as they confirm, on Oak Island. So people are using them for that. They think there are many more times that they probably were used and someone just replaced it and never dialed nine one one. You know, we know that happens even here. We have people on surfboards that get people back in and they never call us. But the devices are being used other places and they do have success stories. And we'd like to bring that trend here since we have available donations to fund it up front. I'm available to answer any questions you might have about it.
Mr. Meyer? So you're willing to do the work, you've got the money. What do you need from us? An approval?
We need to, okay, we're to the point that we can't move forward because we're going to be spending money. So designing signs and obviously, we work with the town to make sure the signage is all correct. That, you know, has your logo, our logo, so we have a part, obviously a partnership, working out who's going to do the website portion. Getting that to, all that needs to be in place before we put stations out. So but really, we just need kind of to go ahead. We can, we can take care of the financial end of it.
Am I making a motion or you guys?
Question?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead. My, my question is, is will this also cover water quality? Is there any way to, you know, we've had several instances in the past years where the water was not suitable for swimming?
That does not, as far as I know, the National Weather Service, they cover marine animal warning. So if we have a high-end piece of jellyfish and stuff like that, they do what's called a purple flag. And we're not, right now, we don't want the transition to flags, you know, because we don't have the staff to put flags out and take them back up right now. But we need some redundancy, you know. I know y'all have a, you know, a beach ranger, you know, somebody just says, hey, it's missing, call us, we'll go put it back up, that type of. Not, not be responsible for checking them every day. If they ride down the beach and they go missing, they call us up, we'll go take care of it, that type of stuff. But to water quality, I don't think that the weather service can do that.
Oh, would could that be?
If we have some tech savvy folks, we could like to figure that out.
DEQ handles that and it it's really best for DEQ, for people to go directly to the state to get that information and thus not be a filter down. But what I had my hand raised for is before you guys pursue taking a vote. I did meet with the fire department for over an hour and discuss all of this and am on board with their ideas. But to protect the town, just because other people are doing it, doesn't always mean that we need to jump on board without giving our attorney a chance to look at any legalities or liability we are taking on with doing that. And also, we would want to work out the details of like the website and just kind of have everything written out so that everybody knows who's doing what and we didn't misunderstand something. So I would suggest before you take a vote tonight that this is a comeback. If there's a consensus that you generally like the idea of it, it go to the attorney for review and then staff work out the details. Because also, we would want to involve the planning department with placement of signs, making sure that we're following all regulations. And so we just kind of need to have a round table discussion with that.
Yeah, we need to get all the key players. Like I said, we're to the point that we can't, or we, we, there's really not a point in moving forward unless we can, okay, it's a, it's a good idea, let's finish it up, kind of deal. Like I said, because we're going to the point where we're going to be needing to create QR codes and design signage and that type of stuff to get it, get it going together.
Direct this down.
It sounds like I'd be in favor of.
If I may, let me make an attempt here. I'm looking, hopefully, for consensus of the board to ask the town manager that worked with the fire department to bring back further proposals in regards to this. I haven't taken a vote. Because you don't have anyone to vote for.
Yeah, and like I said, we, we, we really just needed an agreement that we want to move forward. That's ultimately, we can finish it out.
Yes.
Absolutely. All right, anything else? Ms. Parks?
Thank you for being here tonight. I have a bunch of questions and I won't ask them all.
No, ask the way.
And Christie, forgive me if I get out of my lane and into areas where you've had discussions with staff. But I'm interested in what we're going to do for our fire station in the future and staffing it or and things like that. And as you mentioned, it takes five years to get there to where you're breaking ground. Things that I'm kind of interested in are fleshing out what your requirements are. How many people you want to house, how big the equipment is. And and I'm not looking for an answer tonight, so please take these as rhetorical. I know we're also building, you're building one fire station. Are there others being built in the area that you're aware of?
City town fire department building one.
That's what I thought. So kind of what I'm getting to is if we can kind of flesh out, I'm going to have, you know, I'm going to have a ladder truck, I'm going to have another truck that are this big. The building kind of needs to be this big. I'm going to need to be able to house this many firefighters someplace to mass, things like that. Then we can take this other financial data and go, well, this one over here is eight thousand square feet and this one's maybe four thousand. And we're going to be somewhere like, I'll say five thousand, just something, and do what I would call a parametric cost analysis. So we can just start looking at what the number is.
Yeah.
If we could, if, and I don't know, you guys may have already asked for that, so forgive me if I'm repeating myself. But so we can start figuring out what are the requirements we have to meet with what we would like to do. And same thing for another beach access. How wide does it have to be? Because obviously, you know, real estate easements, all that kind of stuff's going to be very expensive.
Correct.
But I think we need something significantly further down.
Yeah, and I think Mr. Evans could help us out. Can you, can you give us the width of what we're driving over like it crossing the fire station?
I could have right after I got it surveyed and found all the corners, but now I forgot.
Somewhere around ten feet, is that, would that be what we're driving through?
Okay, so tenish, not forty or thirty?
No.
Okay.
And what you're talking about is the needs assessment and me and, me and.
And we've had that, some discussion about that.
We've had this discussion. We, we, we're, depending on how we move forward, the needs assessment will, will come at a time when it will be least intrusive to decide if you're going to bet. But that's what you're talking about.
Yeah.
These, we actually talked about, I think there's a gentleman that's working on one or they're working on the other, and we're going to have some dialogue when the time came with that, with, with the fire department and that first. We had, we've had quite a bit of discussion.
Yes.
I, I figured, and I haven't been there, but we are entering the budget cycle. We have a CIP. We could start penciling something in just as a target. That would be great.
Well, and I think, you know, if that's something you're looking at, you're getting that put together and if Mr. Evans feels comfortable to get it to that point, I know he has some experience in that.
Right.
Discussion. And Chief Todd and Mr. Evans, we've had discussions about, we don't want the town. You could design something very minimal, minimal there. But the problem is, twenty years from now, you, you might not want to be served by private, private department. You might want to have your own fire department, right? We love the relationship we have, but we don't, we wouldn't think it would be fair for us to tell you to build this and this, build the whole two fire trucks. And then one day you need your own fire department and two fire trucks is not the minimum amount that you would have to have. And then, so you, you, there are several factors that you have to look into that, just like if we're staffing it, put two, three, four people in it and one day you have your own. Like I said, who knows what the future might hold? The fire service might change, it's changed rapidly in the last couple of decades. It might change rapidly again. And you need to think about that as you move through this process to make sure that you're building a facility that would meet all those needs. I'm not saying overbuild it, but build it so that it would hold.
Plan for growth.
Yes, absolutely.
I got you. Yeah, I just am very interested. I got you. Yeah, I just am very interested to see this move forward. You know, we've talked about it for a while and I'm, I'm excited about what you're saying and let's see what we can get.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
I'm finished, thank you.
Talking about the beach access, or does it need to be past the, the gate? Or is there a particular distance from eight oh one that y'all are looking at?
I mean, the more, the better. I mean, obviously, you know, it's, I know that's a work in progress and we've made progress over, over the last several years of adding more than what we had. And all of those help. Geographically, being able to break it down, if you're going to say, hey, we're going to shoot for something in this area or something in that area, trying to, trying to look at that logically would be my recommendation. I don't know what the process is from the town, being able to just put one in. That's not something that the fire department that we are generally involved in. We're kind of like with the, with the fire station, say, if we need to do this, this, and this, we'll put people into it. It needs to go between here and here. How you get there past that is kind of out of our realm, if that makes sense. So past, we, we do go to calls at the inlet, so that's always a plus, you know, being able to drive all the way down there. And last year, for whatever reason, we went through a tremendous amount of calls between, what they, seven hundred and a thousand. I mean, we had a lot of rescues in that area, so we spent a lot of time on the beach in that, that spot, so.
What, once you have an emergency access, does that make it a public access?
Well, I think, I think, but if, if we go beyond the gate down there, then all we really need is, is either the property or a right of way. And we need the, the land on this side of, you know, the areas of environmental concern, because once we get the land for an access, then we can get to KAMA or to DEQ to give us the permits to get across there, just like this other stuff we do. But I think that they need to, I want to say, from the planning standpoint, that it's critical that we get as close to the west end with an access as we can. We don't have a real access for them to go out on, uh, past eight, past eight hundred block, and it's a KAMA access. So, you know, whether we get someone to, to give us enough room, you know, to give us an easement, to give us enough room, uh, I think that's, that's our hurdle. That, that's where we're at. Now, there is a, there's some, there's some property. I, I've got a son going to NC State and I'm paying an awful lot of tuition. It looks like they would give us access at the very end down there. If I would ask, if I could have some pool. But there is some NC State property right at the very end of their right of way down. Well, now, I don't know if they're supposed to give up their driveway because they split it in half.
Well, there's some, I know going farther down, there's some private deeded accesses for different properties. If there was land, if there was room enough there, if you put an emergency access, does that take away their private access and it becomes a public? Or if it's an emergency access, it's an emergency access?
I don't know. You, I think the attorney can answer the question about leasing and having a joint lease or, or access on a piece of property.
I just know that maybe there's, there's, there's room at some of those private needed, but they wouldn't want to make it public.
I know it's not a good thing to say that it could be a problem, but I don't know how it's not been a problem for them not to have access to the end, on the, on the west end of this beach.
Not yet, not yet.
Yeah, not yet.
My, my only concern is the gate. I mean, you know, if you had one further down, how are they going to get that gate open without?
If it don't, I'm assuming they'll drive through it.
Yeah, we've done that. It's, it's siren activated. We also have backup code that we can punch in. It'll, it'll, hopefully it'll get it open. The siren will open it up as well. And we keep checking those regularly. They go through them. And so we, we usually find those, usually in kind of short order when they don't work appropriately. And if all else fails, we can, we've disassembled gates before.
Yeah, they're, they're designed.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I've gone here.
When, when those gates, when those gates are installed, when the gates are installed, they're, they're installed with, and we test them and check them to make sure that we work. But if they don't work, most of them are designed to break away and then cheaply be put back together. Their designs are wrong.
Mr. Myers? Yeah, um, back to the fire station. Becoming clear that this is a multi-year, multi-step process of things that have to happen and decisions that have to be made and agreements that have to be. Can we at least start to lay that out so we know where we stand and, you know, this, we've got to do this first and then that, and then that, and then somebody's got to make a decision, then we've got to reach an agreement. Because we want to start, but we don't know where to start. We don't want to get the cart before the horse. We don't want to, you know, waste any time or money. So if somebody could just lay it out and say, here's everything that's going to, you know, where we are today, a staff operating fire station at the end, what's, what does it take?
Yeah, well, I think, uh, like I said, Mr. Evans has, has some experience in that. And if you want to let him kind of leak that portion of it, uh, we're obviously on the technical side. I know some about building, being a fire code official, but that's not the, and I know nothing about setbacks and that type of stuff. But when we start talking about, we need this much space, this truck's this big, you got to be able to fit in, we can hundred percent do that. So whatever pace, uh, the board would like to take it at that, we're prepared to.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would just like to know the steps and these are some milestones and these are some big decision points where the board's got to cough up money or make a decision. Just so we've got it in front of us, because right now, it's like we can't start because we don't know the first step. At least that's my opinion. Any more questions? If not, enough appreciation.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Mr. Parkinson?
Yes, sir. In regard to the Greensboro Street, Street Lift Station, the first disbursement was applied for twelve twenty for DEQ, which is the state portion of the funding, was not received until three three. Turnaround on funding request timeline is of concern to me, as I expressed to you guys in the budget workshop last week. We did finally, just as of yesterday, receive the first EPA disbursement for the payroll portion only of the invoice that came in weeks ago. Um, and we're still waking, waiting to hear back about Buy America, Build America waivers that have been requested by the engineers. Final Key Bridge items, I think Tim did a good job of covering all of that tonight. As far as the mats, they did arrive yesterday from when they were on order. So Public Works will be working to get those out as they can and fitting into their schedule. Recycling program, you guys saw a notice go out, but renewals are due by April first. And if you have not renewed at, by that time, there will be penalty costs because we are charged them. So we will pass them along to you when your card is retrieved and returned. Um, as far as employee updates, Penny King that you met tonight was named the fiscal operations specialist. We're now in the process of interviewing for the reception position, which she vacated. And the police gave you an update tonight of where their status is. I met with Warden Smith on March sixth to navigate the federal approach to funding for the Ocean Boulevard Stormwater. Received a call from the Wilmington District that acknowledges that they have the funds in their budget and that they want to meet to kind of lay out the process. And I met with the Department of Natural and Cultural Resources regarding possible state assistance, which seemed promising on not only this project, but two pages of projects that I presented to them that are town projects. The grant cycle that I mentioned in last month's report is open for the survey that DWR requested. And so I have started on that grant application to try to get state assistance to be a subsidy to the federal assistance. Uh, as far as the pier site, HDR conducted the structural inspections as they reported in their report on three three. Staff kickoff meeting is scheduled or, or happened actually three twelve. And we were able to dive into the timeline a bit more and the agenda. And that's how I know there's some additional questions they need to bring to you. And then Heritage Harbor KAMA permit was renewed, so we do have the renewal from KAMA. To add to this page of the report, since the time of the report, and you guys remember from budgeting that budget amendments you passed, budget adjustments are internal and then the board's just notified of them. Five thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars was moved from operational contingency in the general fund to professional services. And twenty-six thousand was moved from the camera system line item to professional services for the town manager executive search. And then moving to the second page, this is just an update that basically the only two things that were changed were the hundred days from notice to proceed for the bathroom at block Q and seven months from notice to proceed on HDR. And other than that, it pretty much remains the same as last month. So I'll take questions from either page.
Anybody have any questions?
Thanks.
Getting off easy. All right.
Does a good job.
Let's see, Mr. Parkinson, are we on number nineteen now or number twenty? We're all.
We're all on consideration and possible action towards the peer bid demolition. So basically, we had four responses that came in on the twenty-first of February. The four companies responded with the proposals that are included in your packet. After reviewing the proposals, staff deemed that there was some follow-up conversation that was needed specifically regarding the environmental testing and how that played into price and an entire scope of work. So based on those follow-ups, if the board chooses that they want to move forward with this tonight, then the, my recommendation is for Jesse and Myers Construction Company. And that can be sourced from available to appropriate in B part.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the bid for Jesse and Myers and authorize the interim manager to exec, execute the associated paperwork. The funds will be sourced from the available to appropriate in B part.
Second.
Discussion, anyone?
Yes, sir, if I may.
Mr. Smith?
Working with this, uh, board of commissioners, we have always, it was, we've had several instances where the staff has made suggestions and it was always deemed very important that we took the lowest bid. I don't see why this instance is any different from any other bid that's put out. We take the lowest bid. So I don't really see why, number one, why we would, would not take it. And, and another thing, I don't know why we're, uh, tearing the building down without a plan to put one back. I mean, that seems very im, premature, as we've talked about in the past. You wouldn't let us bring up the, the subject of a, a private partnership with the, with the town. We've had people that have, uh, that have come forward and, and agreed to tear down the field building for free. They did not give any estimate on time. Is rebuilding it back or, or give us the occasion to do it? But just for instance, I'd like to show everybody that this is a rendering, now this is from the beach side of, of what they, we planned to build for the town to hold a beach at no, no charge and tear down our building. That's, that's, that is the ocean side. It again, fits in with the design of all the buildings here we have in town. So it looked like a, it would look like a holding beach building. I mean, it was a very well thought out. The floor plan was left pretty much up to us, the board of commissioners, as to what we wanted inside of the building, how we wanted it laid out. But again, as part, part of the pier, there's just like, we're not three to two beginning, that, uh, part of that building on that pier and the cost of it was the ADA rate. Which the ADA rate would be part of destruction. So again, we're paying anywhere from, I think, the highest bid of fifty-four and lower bid of forty-two thousand dollars, where we could get it for the, done for free. Number one, and number two, I don't see why we're entertaining any other bid other than the lowest, which I really don't think we need to take the building down. The building is fine where it is and if we have a plan to replace the building, why are we taking it down? Something that I, I don't think that it's necessary at this point. Uh, it's, it's been there. It's not hurting anything. It's a, it'll be a pain job on it. It's fine. It's not a hazard that I can see anywhere. And I think we need to, to wait and wait until we can get our, our plan to replace it or what we plan to do before we tear it down. It just seems terribly, in my opinion, premature.
Mr. Myers? First, I'd like to ask the interim town manager, maybe, um, Tim, to, what was your rationale for going with this bid versus the lowest bid?
Um, total scope of work, including what would be required for the environmental components as far as asbestos. In the, what is deemed the, I think, lowest bid, if I'm looking here, there's a line on here that says negotiated change order at cost plus fifteen percent. And everything that's in all of the procurement classes say that the town should stay away from cost plus documents. So just based on the discussions, and I would be careful about having Mr. Evans add much because he will be, the, the planning department will be the ones inspecting the work. If he feels comfortable giving any more into his, any, any of the conversations with contractors, I'll let him, but he does not have to do that.
Okay. To me, the building's a liability. It's a risk. It's a safety concern. The faster we get it out of here, the better. It doesn't preclude us from doing anything. I don't think there's any way we can use it. So let's get a clean slate there and we can decide what we want to put in later. But to have that liability hanging around when we can't use it is, is unnecessary. I think we should just take it down. Mr. Thomas?
So a couple of things. I mean, you're always harping that we should do what the staff recommends. And so that's exactly what my motion was, to do what the staff recommends. And Tim's had conversations with all of these vendors and I'm sure Christie's been involved in that. And this is what the staff is recommending, so that's what the motion was. You know, as far as the PPP, we talked about that before, but I say the proposal that Lisa Ragland gave to Page says that they were going to demolish the pier building and save us two hundred thousand dollars when the actual cost is only forty-six, five hundred. So I'm not sure anything written in this can be really relied on for, um, you know, being factual, since that's so far off the mark. And I feel like that taking the pier building down is the first step in moving forward and getting whatever we're going to put there or how we're going to repair or replace the pier. It needs to be done either way, so we should move forward and take the building down. I just want to add one thing about, um, the alliance. I just want to make sure, Christie, I'm sure you've talked to the vendors already about that because you're well aware of that. I just want to make sure that that doesn't, um, slow us down as far as what they're contracting.
I have not talked to the vendors yet because I didn't know if the board is going to move forward with this tonight. But that will be information that's provided to the person that's awarded the contract.
Yeah, so they'll work with the alliance, but it won't slow down the process. That would be my caveat.
Mr. Parkinson?
Seems to me if we take the building down, that's just more advantageous to the folks that, um, you're talking to about the public-private partnership. I'm a little concerned. It sounds like you're negotiating what's going to be there and costs and things like that. And we don't know who these people are. What I don't understand is why don't those individuals come talk to this entire board? Excuse me. I, um, at any rate, I think that building does need to go. And I think the board, the majority of the board voted that we would advertise to take the building out, so that's what we're going to do. Mr. Smith, I see you chuckling, but there was a time when you were the three-two guy, so karma's a bitch.
Anybody else have anything you want to say?
Yes, I'd like to say something. Um, um, you can say what you want about the private-public partnership. I think it's a good idea and the main thing was trying to save the town money. The, that's forty-six thousand dollars, but I've been trying that for a year, so I'm just going to give up on that. So while the fire captain's here, is there a possibility we could do a controlled burn for training to burn the building and then less demolish? Seriously?
It has to be evaluated to see if, if there's some, like, we could have to burn like yours.
Excuse me, I think he's got the floor.
We got it.
Can you come up to my microphone a little bit?
Chief, you will come to my microphone, please.
I can't say yes for sure, that it has a possibility, but yes, we could look at it, but it would be. it, but it'd be, had to be asbestos inspection to make sure there's no asbestos in the building. Then environmental would look at it and see if there's some training, feasible training that can be got out of the building before they would issue a permit from the state to be able to burn it.
Would that be something that they did determine that, that would be helpful to the fire department?
Yes, we'd get some, if they say it's feasible, we'd get some good training out of it yet.
And so you would take care of finding out if that was feasible?
Yes, if that's something y'all want to consider.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I'd like to call the question, please.
I'm not finished yet, please. Thank you. The other thing that I have would be, can I finish?
You still have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. As far as removal of historic memorabilia from, what is the problem that the attorney has with the alliance getting the historical?
I didn't have a problem with it. It was just that the bids had already been submitted when that list was submitted, and I was informed that some of those bids took into, I guess, into consideration whether or not they may be able to, I guess, sell some of the equipment or whatever else. I'm not completely familiar with how that works, so it was just if they had factored into that bid that they were going to sell X, Y, and Z, they needed to both interact with each other and see what could be salvaged for the alliance and what the contractor had already formulated into their bid to sell to make the price work for them.
Well, I think in good faith, I think all they want is historical things. I don't think they want anything of any value as far as selling equipment or anything like that, and I think they've documented. And I think good faith for the historical purpose of it is that they should be allowed to get the historical memorabilia out of the building. I think it was left there by the previous owner, hoping that the town would utilize that.
It was just, it was my understanding that there may have been something that the contractors had formulated into their bid, and that was the only thing that was holding us back. As long as it doesn't, the contractors didn't use it in formulating their bid, it's something that they could sell, the alliance is welcome to have it. They just have to meet with the contractor or the disbursement. We don't want people going back and forth into that building that don't have to be in it either, is the other concern. You know, we have them stand to sign the waiver of liability. I'm concerned about a lot of people going there.
I don't think they want a lot of people. They documented everything. It's inventory. I think it's good faith in town we shall allow them to get it because it's town history.
You guys, I'll leave it to you guys. I just, that's why, that was my understanding. So you guys should make the decision on that then.
Has anybody, has anybody contacted or even asked any of the contractors that are on the list about this, about this?
That was supposed to be done whoever was awarded, as far as I know.
Did you want to answer that?
I wanted to answer two questions at once, or make a clarification and answer a question. To my knowledge, unless I'm wrong, the attorney did not have the conversation with Mr. McInturf about not being allowed. I passed that along based on the information that I got from Sydney, so I don't want the interpretation to be that she communicated with them. Also, I was answering Tracy earlier that the contractor has not been told this yet because I wasn't sure if you guys, you guys are going to move forward on awarding a contract tonight or not. So once they are awarded, the contractor will be communicated with.
I'd like to call the question, please.
All in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Both say no?
No.
Read to Madam Clerk. Ms. Ferguson, can you still have the floor?
Yes, sir. Next, we have for your consideration, the bids came to you last month for Block Q, and you accepted the bid and the grant extension paperwork to be completed. The formal contracts were not prepared yet, but they have been reviewed by the attorney in there before you tonight for you guys to award the contract to the most responsive bidder and direct the town manager to sign the contract and complete all associated paperwork. That bid was for five hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred dollars.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to reward the contract to Cooney Construction and authorize the town manager to execute the associated paperwork.
Second.
Discussion. Any discussion on the side? Ready to vote?
Yep.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. You now. All right.
Uh-huh. Next, we have Mr. Mike Pearson, who's Vice Chair of the Recreation Advisory Board, who's going to present to you the board's memo regarding the work they did on the pickleball courts. The board has really worked hard since October on the tasker that you gave them, so I'm going to turn the floor over to Mike.
Okay, well, hello, everybody. Good to see you. Good to see this crowd out here tonight. Back in the October meeting, the Board of Commissioners asked the Parks and Recreation Board to take a look at evaluating town properties that could be used as a location for some permanent pickleball courts. The criteria that we looked at was proximity to bathrooms, available parking and sidewalks, site preparation, proximity to any residence causing the noise, layout on the property, lighting. So one of the first things that we did is, we really had, it was actually surprising, we had a lot of what I'll call the pickleball community that showed up at our meeting. I mean, I was actually pleasantly surprised at how many people play pickleball, and they expressed their, what they would like to see, and so our first step was, we decided that we really need to go look at pickleball, you know, other facilities. So we take off on a twenty-five-degree windy morning. And we take off, and we, it was, it was, it was cold. And so we take off, and we go over to the Ocean Isle Beach Park over on, on the island, and it's, we looked at theirs, and it's pretty close to what we have. It's a multi-purpose court. But then we went over to the Ocean Isle City Park. Now, I can't remember, Christie, you can correct me because my old brain don't work like it used to. I can't remember if it was six courts or eight courts that were designated pickleball courts. And so that gave us a really good sense of, you know, let's see what it looks like sitting there by itself. And so then we left there, and we went over to the Lockwood Folly to theirs, and, you know, they had a, like a basketball court that could be used as a pickleball court beside it, and then they had like a smaller, I think it was a downsized pickleball court to the side. And so then we came back, and next meeting comes along nice, pretty one day, we're going to go look at property. And so the first property that we took a look at is the Sand Dollar Site, which is tatty-cornered right here, right across from Bridgeview Park. And looking at that site, you could only put one court on it, plus it was very close to those residents right there, too. And so then we went to the old Pavilion Site, Jordan Boulevard. We voted that one out. The reason that we voted that, that one out is because you couldn't orient, you know, a pickleball court needs to be laid out towards town. Okay, and you couldn't, that, we couldn't lay it out on that particular site, and you couldn't put the wood on it. So that really doesn't, you know, help our pickleball player situation. We went over and we took a look at Block Q, and, you know, that was the one that we, that makes the most sense, really. You know, there wasn't, we, we didn't have to list, wasn't a whole lot of issue with that lot. And then we went down and looked at the lots down at eight hundred block, and we immediately said no to that because of, you know, site, no bathrooms, no parking, and just, you know, the cost would just be great. So by consensus, we came back and by consensus, we decided that the construction of the pickleball courts need to be on Block Q. We need to have four pickleball courts. We need to have two permanent pickleball courts, and then we need to have one combination tennis and pickleball. Because we did, we did have people ask us to not get tennis courts. The cost, the cost on it, site prep, lighting, fencing, is based on construction of other pickleball courts, looks like about a hundred and fifty thousand. That's about it. We do propose, we do propose that specifics such as the court placement on the site coincide with the overall master planning process that we did recommend for the entire Jordan Boulevard Block Q area, and suggest that any other detail be worked out as part of that plan.
Yes, Thomas?
Thank you for doing all that work and going all over town. I just want to make sure that I understand, so you're suggesting that we put two just single courts and then two that would be multi-use? And is that in addition to your previous recommendation, recommendation of putting the bandstand on Block Q, so that still stands as your recommendation?
That's my pay grade, okay? You know, you got the plan, you know, y'all, that's, y'all have to decide doing a site plan for the whole thing, but, you know, we've got a place to start.
Okay.
What's the surface?
Oh, gosh. Christie, you'll have to help me out here. I can't remember.
It, it depends, but like there's asphalt concrete combos, the, across the street, our multi-purpose court was asphalt because the asphalt seam is what we're replacing. And it really depends on the, there's different surfacing that you can do with your painting as well. So is that a hundred and fifty thousand just for the construction of the court that doesn't, including stormwater?
That, that is figured, that's figured, the courts, the lighting, the site prep. But now this is based on two courts that were built like two years ago. Okay, so that's, that's just kind of a, throw it out there.
But wasn't the original stormwater plan for that area discarded?
Not where they, so you mean the original stormwater plant? As far as I know, the stormwater plant is still intact.
They voted not to use it.
We just haven't done anything that would engage the full stormwater. The plant, the permit was issued, and remember I said, once you start exceeding a certain area, then you're going to have to go with a stormwater, with a state stormwater, and you can just incorporate that, what you believe.
So when we voted to change the original stormwater to just accommodate the bathrooms, the old one's still intact for the rest of it?
Well, we, yeah, it never, we didn't invalidate the original permit in case we wanted to do other things there. And see, we want, we only have to engage that once we pass ten thousand square feet, then we would have to engage a state stormwater permit on that site. It's more than that. And it's for public use. So, you know, we preemptively are using our town's ordinance for our onsite wait, onsite stormwater now, and if we ever cross that ten thousand, then we should have embraced a stormwater permit that we can then modify, because it's real easy to modify them once you get to that point. Probably don't, and you can use the existing plan as long as we don't do something really, I mean, there's not much difference between a tennis court parking place when it comes to pervious member.
Correct.
So I appreciate all the work that you did and everything. I'm just playing devil's advocate here. The reason we didn't do the town revenue building boat parking was because number one, a stormwater, and everyone was against the amount of pervious service. So now we're back at putting pervious surface back where the, which everyone was against before. Am I correct? Can I answer that?
Yes, ma'am.
We weren't objecting to the pervious surface. We are objecting to using Block Q for boat parking versus something that's recreational use for the community.
I think there was a lot of problems with the fact of the amount of perv, because we even mentioned that we would change the boat park into gravel so that there wouldn't be pervious surface, and most of that kickback, number one, was complaints of people living on Quentin Avenue about the stormwater plan and the pit that was there and about the pervious surface.
Well, I'm just telling you why I voted against it was because I didn't want to use that prime real estate for boat parking.
That's recreational, by the way. Just because some people play pickleball and don't vote.
Ms. Parsons has the floor.
Thank you for doing all that work. I wanted to see if I can, I'm a little slow on the uptake. So it's a hundred and fifty thousand for all four courts? Two courts, so, okay, so if we do four, we're looking at three hundred.
Well, you couldn't, you couldn't.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that that's not a quote. It's a, it's a guesstimate.
That's just even bigger for another, from another fan.
It's what I call the best bad answer you've got.
That's the best bad answer.
Okay. Just for stormwater, I'd really like to see getting it underground, kind of like we're doing for the bathroom, so we don't lose that real estate to work on, but I would like to make a motion, if I may, that we receive this report and consider your tasker complete.
A second.
Sounds good to me.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you read the motion back?
That we receive the report and consider the tasker complete.
I'm sorry, I still didn't hear that last part. We received the report and what?
Consider the tasker complete.
Everybody understand the motion? And we've got a second, right? Mr. Myers?
I just had a question. So with this plan, the existing courts there just remain untouched? The courts right there?
This court will be designated basketball.
That'll be a designated basketball, and then we put four pickleball.
Any more discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. You now, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ferguson?
Yes, sir. Next on the list is a fund balance appropriation that will cover additional anticipated legal fees through the end of the current fiscal year. Finance recommendation, and my recommendation is to approve the amendment.
Make a motion to approve the amendment.
Second.
Any discussion?
What are we spending this on? Who's getting this money?
Can I just comment then?
I was directing my questions to Christie.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to be careful about how I answer this question because the extensiveness of the budget amendment was discussed in an executive session, so in public to discuss more than just saying anticipated legal fees before the end of the fiscal year. I don't know that it's in my purview to do that. I will let the attorney chime in on whether it's okay for me to continue to answer that question.
You can go into closed session and discuss it, but we're not going to discuss that until the question.
Ms. Thomas, you want to say anything?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right, any more discussion?
I've just got a comment. So we're approving to spend money, but we don't know how much.
No, it's fifty thousand.
We know it's going to be fifty thousand per, it won't be anymore.
I cannot tell you that it won't be more than that because in general, when the town gets into legalities, the length of those are unknown, but if additional budget amendments were needed, they would come back before the board because the board approves any amendments and adjustments are done in-house.
I think, Christie, it's just, it seems that the board that wants to be conservative with spending money, it's, it seems to be going out off a cliff.
All right, any more discussion?
Does this include the fees from the attorney that was approved a couple of months ago for the personnel issue? Or is that separate?
That was separate. We, the attorney for the other issue in the motion, I believe it was discussed that that was going to be from funds that were currently already in the budget, and it was through an amendment that that would be taken, I mean, I'm sorry, an adjustment that that would be taken care of.
Have we resolved that issue?
We're still waiting for a written opinion from them.
If you people cannot hear, if you raise your hand, I'll try to, if people speak If you people cannot hear, if you raise your hand, I'll try to, if people speak up. All right, so we've got a motion, a second, you ready to vote?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All who say no. Anything else, Ms. Ferguson?
I believe it's time for me to take a break.
All right, the wheel number eighteen. Is that where we are? Help me out here.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. All right, Mr. McGrady?
So, yeah, before you, the contract for the internal auditor and the advisory board, I put a note there that the audit committee met previously to discuss this. Um, but since then, new members have been elected, and we've actually met just before this meeting, and they recommended to approve the contract as drafted.
All right. You want to make a motion?
I move that we accept the contract as drafted.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All who say no. Anonymously approved, the wheel number nineteen, and Ms. Ferguson?
Uh, Mr. Evans. Mr. Evans will take this one.
I don't know what happened when he started, he's too bald. Didn't get, didn't sit there, you don't know what happened?
Whoa.
Don't catch his own fire, don't it? Don't get it. I'm so far down this list that my ordinance is in the bottom of this paper. Okay. I hope I'm where I need to be, make sure I got everything here. All right, so what we have here is, is that this is a little housekeeping, uh, in reference to the letter that stayed up there for a long time, it's not up there now. But anyway, whenever we start doing our stuff with CRS or we do anything that does what has to do with our floodplain, we have to make sure, in case y'all can't tell, that we're almost absolutely perfect. If not, then your insurance gets higher. In this particular case, when, in twenty eighteen, when they made the flood maps, they had all the zones laid out, but they weren't quite through, uh, you know, tuning it just right. And so our ordinance and the model ordinance didn't have an AO zone in it. And so they, the Department of Public Safety and FEMA came and said, hey, if you want to keep that rating, you might want to get this zone added into your model ordinance. And so we took their advice, and that's what this is. Now, how will this affect properties on Oldham Beach? It will not. This is just for shallow flooding. And although we do have some, we also have an ordinance that says every house has to be built with a restricted standard. That's how you get the twenty percent discount. So although this is going into ordinance, unless you change our ordinance, it will never affect how you, you build because we build to the toughest standard. But it has to be in there so that our ordinance is considered complete under the CRS program and under FEMA's guideline. So that's what this is. Now, that, the, the ordinance comes along with a consistency statement. We took it to the planning board. Uh, it does not have to go for a hearing because it's not part of the land use, it's actually part of the regulatory. But we took it to, we took it there anyway, we had them do a consistency statement. We have one in here that y'all also must consider. You must make a motion to, to say that you've considered this, this consistency statement, and then you can approve the ordinance twenty-five dash oh-three, which adds the AO zone, which is, which is those areas in a special flood hazard area established under one fifty-five, four point oh-five, are areas designated as shallow flooding areas. I won't get into the rest of reference of the ordinance, but it basically is just saying the same thing the ordinance says. Anything built there has to be built above the floodplain, it has to have a two-foot design flood elevation pre-board. Um, and, uh, it pretty much basically says everything that we already have. So, there's the ordinance, basically housekeeping.
So if I understand, we need a motion to approve the consistency statement, and then a second motion for the ordinance.
That's right.
Okay. Motion to approve the consistency statement.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All who say no. Anonymously, thank you, sir.
Get the ordinance.
Yep.
All right.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty-five oh-three.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All who say no. Anonymously, anything else to say? All right, public comment. Anybody want to say anything about anything? If you raise your hand and be recognized, come to the podium, speak into microphone, identify yourself, and address the commissioners, please. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Marty Arrowood, one fourteen Shrimp Street, East End of the Beach. This is my annual plea. You're going into the budgeting process, please, 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 triple the trashcans down our way. For God's sakes, our cleanup, we do cleanups on Monday morning. It needs to be Ferry Street, Ranger Street, and on the way down to the East End. And I wouldn't put four trashcans at a public access. I would put them like, space them out, maybe put them on poles, because these people aren't gonna walk. They're just gonna leave their stuff right there at the edge of the dune. So like I do every year, please, we have all the cars, we have most of the, other than the pier, we have all the public parking down there. So please, 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 get us more trashcans. Thank you.
Well, Carter, I want to reach Starfish Drive. My first comment is I think we ought to hire Chris to confirm the town. My second comment is, uh, I don't think we ought to burn anything on the beach. Adam Millican and I were the first ones to show up at Starfish Fire. If there's been a ten mile an hour wind, we wouldn't have to worry about that fire station. Um, third comment is, I live across the street from the fire station, and when you build one, uh, you need to get one that the ladder truck will fit in. Right now, the one they have has boats, jet skis in one bay. It has a pickup truck in the other. It has the shortest fire engine they have in the next. It has a generator in the bathrooms installed. They need a lot more than that, and they'll need a lot more to plan for the future. That's why I say you need to write a letter to Jonathan Howell, ask him if we can get a variance on those lots in order to create a new fire station. It has to be between Fayetteville Street and the eight hundred block. Fits it perfectly. When Starfish Drive, the water was this deep, the ocean Boulevard in front, Greensboro Street, it's still dry. And it was not flooded. So I don't see any sense in tearing down a perfectly good building. The other part is that they can use the fire station that's there now while the new fire station's getting built when it, and it, and when it does get done. So they'll have a place on the beach after the new fire station is built atop Chris Clements, and they could really use that building for the maintenance department here on the beach to have equipment on the beach, a place for the people that are maintenance guys to have, have a place to go to the bathroom, eat lunch, store their equipment, put a backhoe. You know, it's a long ways to drive a backhoe all the way from the emergency center, onto the beach and back. And so there's a lot of equipment, a lot of things that the maintenance department needs if we keep the fire department from having an interim, uh, place to be while we do build a fire station. So please, please, write Jonathan Howell, ask if we can get a variance from the DEQ, KAMA, and Corps of Engineers to use those lots for emergency service. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, I'm Lisa Ragland at one fifteen Salisbury Street. Couldn't speak before the meeting because I needed to hear how you guys voted on the fifty thousand dollars for legal fees. So I wanted to, um, make everyone aware that the lawsuit that was filed against the town regarding the quorum, regarding the rules of procedure, could be resolved outside of court. And I've asked that it be resolved outside of court. So I want to just go over something briefly and ask for your help. Pursuant to records obtained by subpoena, the town received a recommendation to revise the rules of procedure to reinstate the mayor's voting power in the event of a tie, since the current town rules conflict with the charter and general statute. Our town attorney reported to the news that they would be amended. So clearly, there's a problem with the way the rules of procedure are currently written, and a recommendation has been made to the board for those to be corrected. Further, the same representative from the UNC School of Government also indicated that the town charter should be reviewed by the town attorney since our charter was enacted in nineteen sixty-nine and the statute for quorum was enacted in nineteen seventy-one. Our charter should be amended to reflect that three commissioners plus the mayor or four commissioners, since one of those would be the acting mayor as mayor pro temp in the mayor's absence. Those must be, that's the way it should be written in order for quorum to be met. There's not a town in North Carolina that has a quorum written the way that our charter is written. There was a meeting with the prior Board of Commissioners, in fact, I believe in twenty twenty-two, where quorum was questioned due to vacant seats. The only way the town was able to determine whether a quorum was present was to reference the general statute, which is what our charter references. So it's very ambiguous, and it needs to be resolved, and a judge is going to order that that be resolved. So I implore you to reach out and encourage the board members that you elected to resolve this legal action without involvement of additional attorneys and fifty thousand dollars in legal fees. I'm not trying to charge any of our taxpayers more money to get this resolved, and I really trust and hope that you guys will do the right thing.
Anyone else want to speak? Last call. All righty, we're gonna move on to number twenty-one, mayor's comments. Um, just a couple of things real quick. It seems like tornadoes are becoming more numerous across our nation. And in the last, uh, few weeks, it seems like we had to send out some weather emergency blasts, so, so forth and so on, about potential hazards. We hate doing that, but we do the best we can. And sometimes, uh, as your emergency director, I get, I get, and or Chris to get, and notice that it's something we have to do right quick because all of a sudden, this thing was not expected. And, uh, so, cross your fingers, we've been mighty lucky through the years. We haven't missed yet, but somewhere along the way, uh, stronger possibility that something will slip through and attack us in the middle of the night or something. And having grown up here, I, I can remember so well, when there was in the bed in the middle of the night, and a tornado hit Durham Street, Mr. Arrowood Newman's house lifted the roof off of it in the middle of the night, and there was no notice of any dangers or anything, and did more damage up and down the island, and some more events like that. So the bottom line of what I'm trying to say is, the town will do the best it can to notify you whenever we see emergency weather conditions or other conditions that we're concerned about. Please pay attention to them because, uh, things do happen here. It's not just always out west or in Texas somewhere. Uh, these things do come by, and, um, we do the best we can to keep you informed. I will be out of town, uh, rest of the week, uh, starting in the morning. I'll be rallying, begging for some things for the town and, uh, and also for the college. Uh, so, uh, I won't be around, I know, I expect several phone calls at tonight's meeting. Uh, bear with me, I won't be able to answer the phone during the day for the next three days, I don't think, so. Anyway, thank you all for being here tonight, and, uh, sure am enjoying this weather, these longer days. I hope you are, too. Mr. Myers?
Just like to thank everyone for coming and or attending online, and, uh, thanks for your involvement.
Yeah. I mean, I, I'm really disappointed in what we, the way we reckon we're moving at the pier. And it seems to be a part of a, part of a strategy or a, or a set of, of things that, uh, that were cast before even the, uh, the team members of the board of commissioners. It's, uh, it's a shame and it's sad, I hate to see, uh, this stuff go because I, I feel like that, uh, it's gonna be really hard to get it back. Uh, I'll put it back in place and I'm building back in place. If you don't have a plan to, to do it going in, it's hard to kind of have a plan after the fact. My only, my only hope is that, uh, Chief Dix has done a great job, and I know he's, uh, I've got the limited staff, but it seems to be nice warmer days, and brought back out to golf carts. And, uh, case in point, it was made, uh, not long ago, the ones that had the lithium batteries, when they stop, they stop. My neighbor and I watched that happen just this past weekend. So, you know, it's dangerous, uh, and in fact, not a person on that six-seater had to get their seatbelt on. So just, uh, again, this, this all be mindful of the, the folks coming out on the golf carts. They seem to want to ride in the bike lane, on the sidewalk, and sit on the streets as they're supposed to. So hopefully, we can, uh, we can get some information out to our renters, uh, the rental agencies, uh, as they sometime even supply a golf cart with the rentals. So hopefully, that can, that can be, be helped. And echoing, uh, the mayor's fears of, uh, getting the warnings out for bad weather. You know, I, again, signed up for the, the kind of Oldham Beach emergency, uh, notifications. And Brunswick County has the same thing. You can go to Brunswick County and get on their emergency list, and if, uh, there's a tornado warning, they'll send you, uh, they'll, they'll call you on the phone, and, and a recording will tell you that there's an emergency. Uh, they'll text you also, and you send back a notification whether you received it or not. But that's good, especially in the spring, and then the, in the fall of, uh, inclement weather coming in, that we can have a little bit of notification ahead of time. Otherwise, I really, it's good to see all you folks. Uh, it's been a, a tough couple of months for me. I apologize to the, the, the people of Oldham Beach for not being able to be here for two special meetings and a board of commissioners meetings. But I will do my absolute best not to miss anymore. And it's, it's really good to be back and good to see you.
Ms. Thomas?
I just want to say that I'm happy to see that the board is moving forward on some of our priorities and our objectives, despite a lot of efforts to slow us down and a lot of resistance coming from a lot of different places. And I just want to say thank you for being here and have a great night.
Rock.
I want to thank the, um, fire chief and his assistant for your being here tonight. I think that we definitely need to continue to work together and move forward with the ideas you brought forward. We save one life, that's well done. Um, y'all have done a great job, doing a great job while you're building a new building. Um, it's gonna look nice. Um, Jeremy, I wish everyone a speedy recovery that's sick. I hate to see them out sick. I know y'all are working hard, thank you. And the rest of the staff doing a great job. Christie doing her two jobs, and everybody with the staff working great. I really appreciate it, and thanks for coming out, everyone.
Ms. Parker?
I think everybody's covered everything, so I won't reiterate, uh, other than thanks for everybody coming out. Hope you great, have a great evening, and I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to second that. Ms. Parker?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.